It's like when you look at job postings that are posted in the newspaper, they'll say, you know, starting at, it might be a good idea to do that, maybe that would draw something in.
Let me address a couple of things. So you're looking at the administration budget where in an increase by that larger amount. What happened was, so the building and zoning budget, it was zeroed out, it was 289,000. So that was one position actually moving from building zoning over to administration. It is not an increase, it was just moving of a person because that department, the projection was to be, to have that taken over by an outside person. But the person that is there is just moving.
She made 70,000 dollars a year.
No, 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 you're talking about salary and benefits. And there was, so we have salary, her, that person, plus salary, salary and benefits includes insurance, so that's usually about 30%. So if we look at that number, it's actually about closer to 41% now. So if you're looking at that, plus the salary, so that's, that's.
I'm just looking at the salary column, I'm not even looking at the benefits.
There is a part-time person in there. The part-time person was, we were looking at, council wanted aid to have an intern to be in that department so that they can find out, pull up all the old bills, pull up all the other things, that's 17,000. No, I'm sorry, it's 15,000. So it's 15,000 of that. So if you look at all of that, pull that over, that's what that is.
Wasn't that all in the, the last one?
No, that wasn't, that wasn't.
That's something that we were, I think one of the things that we found out, and of course I'm just like you, flabbergasted.
Is there a raise in there? I guess that's my main question. Is there one penny of money above what is current for anything? That's what I'm asking.
We did suggest that we would get intern in to help us go through which, what I feel is unbelievable, that as we sit here today, I cannot tell you how much money we owe out.
And see, that's, that's amazing to me because we've been doing that for the last couple of years.
It's not, it's above amazing, you know, it's going beyond that. So it seemed like the only way to really get a handle on that is to get someone here to go through. We're so busy paying bills, and my contention has always been, if somebody owed me for a year or two year, three years, by golly, if I hadn't paid them in three or four years, you'd think they're looking for it now.
Well, my question still remains, okay, you put the intern in there, is there one penny of money in increases, perks, anything in this budget?
Other than that.
The increase is only, is only for the intern?
Yes.
Here, Ms. Major, I'm not going to talk about the salary portion because Mr. Robinson addressed that. Here's the other thing that you have to consider. So I've had experience before where we had, I went into a place and they had past due bills. What I've seen in my experience, to catch up from what was past due, it took a million extra dollars. And they were in better financial shape than this company. Now, if you look at the past due bills, some of the things that we've been paying are bills in this last current, this last fiscal year, we've been paying bills that were two years behind, one year behind. So when you look at that, it's going to take, it usually takes three years to get from under all of your old stuff, to get to a place where you're starting fresh.
How much do, how much do we still owe? We just went through 3.5 million. I mean, you know, how much do we still owe?
And that's the thing that flabbergasted me too, even though some of that money was used for other things, but majority of that money, and I've said to council more than once, when we got that influx in, and I've said it to our trade group, we should have prioritized what should be paid. But we did not.
The other thing is, can I ask a question since you're on that?
Well, now that we're starting a new, we're asking for a tan. Then I guess we need to be sure on this, we're asking for a tan for 3 million. Is that going to be enough? You know, it started out one, I mean, the 1.5 and 2, now it's 3. Is that's going to be enough to get us out of the hole?
It's not going to get us out of the hole, it's going to fill a gap in revenue. It's not going to, it's not going to be used to pay catch-up on back payments.
Because that's what they did, assigned and getting money.
I think that this is just filling the gap. The tan is, what do they call it, bridge gap, finance and whatever.
Right, this bridge might be financed based on the revenue cycle where most of your money comes in between December and March of the year, the rest of that's low periods. And the low period actually starts to begin at June through October. So, actually June through November. And so we're making it through that point. But it does say up to 3 million. So, and that was the recommendation of the bond attorney's partner proposal, that doesn't say that we're, they're borrowing 3 million, but they can go up to it. And it was based on the actual expenditures that we have and the revenue information I got from the treasurer's office. So that's based on what happened. But I want you to also remember, in this last fiscal year, there were some extraordinary events that happened. Remember, there was more than half a million in prior year retirements that were covered in that year. So we started that year already way behind. And that took a large portion of the money at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, and that was catching up those retirement payments, some insurance payments, things that were already in arrears.
Are we caught up with those now?
Yes, we're, we're in a, so there's two payments, there's only two payments of retirement due, and that's just what's due now. Everything else is paid. Insurance is paid today. So those issues that we started the year out with last year, they no longer exist because that's been taken care of. But a large portion of this happened at the beginning of the fiscal year. I will say this, even with things like software or other things, we're talking about, okay, let's look at Southern Carolina Alliance. We were a year behind. So now we're just in the current year. So that just got us, I mean, we're, we're still in the hole, but we're not as deep in the hole as we were before. So we are making progress, but that's the, also the purpose of that intern. And so we're looking at the intern and bringing the person from another department into this line. So you're looking at that difference, but a whole nother person, a full-time person moved from another department over, and you only see a 10,000, about a $10,000 difference increase when you brought another whole full-time person's salary into this department. So, but then the intern is part-time. So that's a part-time person. And that's the 15,000. So you see a full-time person, the difference is only 10,000, and the part-time person is 15,000.
And I guarantee you, any increases?
There better not be any.
Let me, let me tell you this first. As you indicated in your open statement, you talked about public service, you know. If I understood you and I took pretty good notes, that you don't mind seeing some increases in public service.
That we need.
Okay.
You know.
I promise you that, that's what we will do just for you.
Yeah.
I will add to Ms. Chanel about the past due bills, we are working with an outside company, Stifel, is it Stifel Company? They're going to help us kind of navigate through getting caught up on some past due stuff, possibly some long-term loans and different things to get caught up. The tan is not intended to.
We're going to have so many ones out, we're not going to know what to do with ourselves. Are you, are you willing to come into a freeze in hiring other than the public service? Are you, are you willing to freeze training, freeze all expenses that we don't need?
I think mandatory training we're going to have to do.
Mandatory, that's what I said.
Going to have to do. But I think any other training, I think this council would look at it very hard. And one of the things that I don't want to see us do is not have any county employee not having the opportunity to, better equipment to serve the public.
We shouldn't be paying for it though at this point. At this point we should not, because everybody's been here a while.
But usually the training that we, we receive is generally connected with association of counties. And they usually do a very good job of keeping that, those rates down, and especially for rural communities. And if they have to, they can, they can exempt rural communities.
And I'll add one more, the grant writer you asked about. I did speak to the fire chief a while back whenever we were first talking about the budget, and he, he wanted to keep that grant writer in because they know the lingo that's involved in writing those grants. And our current grant writer just doesn't really have a whole lot of experience in the, in that field of grant writing. And he felt that the $5,000 is much needed and would benefit him tremendously.
And then I, I don't understand, and I say this every year for the, like, the past two or three years, we used to get budgets, and Mr. Robinson and Ms. Taylor both know that they always showed the year-to-date expenses of each department by line item. We don't have that anymore. So how the public is supposed to know what was actually spent, and if these numbers are viable or not, there's no way of knowing. I do not understand why, you know, those numbers ought to be in, why they're not included in the budget anymore.
And the best way, for me, what I normally do, because our auditors, they actually do an excellent job of finding things through all the boxes and all the folders. And I would say those numbers are pretty accurate. I goad it in.
The problem with that is, is we only have, the latest audit we have is 2022. You know, so there's no comparison with those numbers as to today.
Well, council, council has been provided with year-to-date balances.
Yeah, but the citizens haven't, and it used to be part of the budget.
That can be provided, so.
It used to be right there in a line that you could just go straight across. Well, alls I can say is, the ox is in the ditch big time. And going forward, we're not going to be able to get much more money. CARES is gone, American Rescue is gone, COVID's gone, you know. We got downgraded in our, as you heard again today, we got downgraded, downgraded by HUD, you know. So there's not a lot more money coming.
But we did, yeah, and for council, that chairman and Jamie that wasn't on that call, there is a correction folder that we could use that will help us. We're 50.9 in low and moderate income, the limit is 51. My argument, 50, anything over half.
Yeah, but HUD doesn't round it up, it isn't as we were told today.
But there is a percentage of error on that, which is humongous, 35, we were told. So there's some wiggle room to get back to 51 if we need for any grant situation that we find ourselves in. I, I felt better, I won't have to argue too much with the National Association of Counties now, because I think we, we do have.
I hope it works.
I do, I think we do have a way, way out.
Well, I just ask you.
May I give her a little bit more information? So, Ms. Major, I do have something for you. Also, I wanted to let you know, the council has really been working very hard. We worked together in February. They had, they went to the legislators, they petitioned for additional money, they've gotten additional money. And so for police vehicles, for law enforcement, they have gotten, they have secured.
Oh, I know, I know.
But what I'm going to say too is, they are not done. So after that original amount of money that they secured, so Ms. James went and she got, so now there's the money for office of aging. There is money that, for the walking trail. And so, and then there is more for recreation. Also, we submitted another loan, we submitted a grant application with Claver's office, we have not heard yet, and that's for another couple of million. So we are looking for outside other ways to do things.
The problem is, is we need the money for paying bills and staying current, you know.
Well, we're working on it. If you notice that, I know that when I first got here, the phone kept ringing, vendors were coming to the office, where's my money, where's my check, where's all these things? That is not happening. So we are doing a better job, there's not as much complaint because we are making progress. But I want to say that they are actually working and making the efforts and busting along with them. On the other, on our side, accounts are being reviewed, contract prices and pricing for things are being renegotiated. We have also decided to make it a priority at council's request to look at contracts. And if it's not serving us, or it's too much, it's time to get rid of it. So now we're trying to get into the leads and do the things like cut costs, cut out things you don't need. And if they're not serving us, and it's too much, then hey, maybe we need somebody else, we need to figure out a better way. So we do hear you, they are working, and we are looking at what we can do to reduce costs and reduce expenses.
Do we have a projection of how far out this is going to take to get to where we're reasonable?
I think once we get that intern in, we have a better.
I'm going to hold you to that.
Yeah, and please do. And one of the things, one of the things I have to say to you, you know, over the years, you have kept this council in the loop with your concerns. And I wish we had half a dozen or more like yourself.
I try, and you know it's never meant personally, ever.
I know.
It usually does take about three years to get to the other side. And that's just been my experience.
And we're already going, one in, this is your two.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
In reference to Congressman Clyburn, he's going to be here at GoVans on the 29th, 10:30, that's 5th Sunday. But Dalton, that works in his office, stated that if we needed more than $2 million, if it was something else that we really needed, that we needed to request that.
We need to request.
We need to request that on Congressman Clyburn or Ms. Lewis from Dalton.
Quickly.
That, you know, of course, if he's going to be on the 29th, you can ask him, you know.
Well, I know we had some, some big concerns just come up once in a while, so we definitely need to add that to the list. We'll get together.
So he said if he needs something else, just, you know, let them know, your name.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Smith?
First want to stand as the treasurer and ask the question because I'm looking at the budget. And I see some council's adjustment in salaries for the treasurer department. And I'm on page 15. I don't know which one we are looking at, or which one y'all looking at to approve. We got two of them. So which one is our issue one?
9/11.
Just want to say with recommendation. And then the other one says, so which one we are supposed to go by? The one that says with recommendation or the annual proposed?
Which one, it's got 9/11 on it, on the page?
9/12.
Both of them say 9/12, we got two.
Mine got 9/11.
Or in which is 9/11?
We got two. There's two out there. One says recommendations, with recommendation, and one says annual proposed.
Is there any different information on the pages to your question?
Yeah, which one, yeah, which one I should be looking at, if there's some, what's the difference between them?
I would think the 9/12, the latest one would probably be the one to deal with.
You got 12?
I, I have not looked.
I've got 11.
I'm still looking at 9/4.
So I can explain that. So the budget, so they are the same. There was no reduction in anybody's salaries. That was just a change that was, that was a projection based on if the council made changes on a prior year. And so what the proposed was is from that number from prior year. But as far as any actual reductions in anybody's salary, no, that's just a tighter number, more reflective of what's going to happen. And that was when they were looking at proposed increases for the, for the elected officials who were on the lower end, out of whack. And so that was, that's what that adjustment number is. But no one's salary was changed. No one's getting anything different. But this is based off of what, what actually anybody is receiving now. There's nobody.
It's based off of current numbers.
Yes.
What's your question?
Because I see the recommendation, and the recommendation is lowering it by $5,000 in the treasure department from what the department request was. And I was just asking which one is which.
They're the same on both pages. If you look at it, the net change is $200. Really, it's a $200 increase in overall. But that's based on the changes of, hey, so there is a medical change, it was just tightening up the line items and making corrections. But no one's salary has been decreased in any way.
Okay. Got an answer?
Okay, that's on the treasurer's side. Now, me as a citizen on this side, because I sit back and I look and I see there, there is. sit back and I look and I see there, there are many things that I've got, I'm concerned about as a citizen. Um, whether we are good steward over what God has blessed us with, um, the finance that comes in. And when I look at that, I look at um, last year's budget, when we did the budget, we were short. I think we, we made it balanced. I don't know how, but it ended up being balanced. So when I look at the funds that came in from West Fraser, I'm asking, okay, if we were short a million and needed a million, so a million should have balanced out that budget. And if it had balanced out that budget, we had a million left to do what we needed to do with to pay bills. So my question then is if what happened during that time that um, that took place? And again, when we did that and I'm looking at that and I'm looking at our budget, everybody didn't use their budget up. So what happened to the funds when everybody didn't use all their budget? Some people might have used more than the others, but everybody didn't use it. So how much was left over from the budget?
I think we're on the same page and the thing that I question and the things that I'm flabbergasted with is the fact, what would have been the outcome if we didn't have the two point seven?
Right.
You see? And if you, if you put all the eggs in the basket, I'm just like, we should have been made whole, but we were not made whole. And I think the uh, our administrator kind of indicated we were not made whole simply because we had so much out there that was, needed to be paid. You see? And that's why I wanted to kind of prioritize that money before we started paying, paying bill. But we, we allowed administrator, administrative staff to go ahead and start paying it. Because give you a good example, not taking anything away from Southern Carolina Alliance, you know, fifty thousand that, that we, we actually paid them. If you look at our fee and loo that we give them, it's almost two hundred thousand. You see? So that's why we needed some, you know, some input in where that money would, how the project and who you pay.
Yeah, just understand the, and I know you do, but the budget from last year didn't reflect past due stuff. It was just the current year stuff. So obviously catching up on all the past due stuff got us to where we're using a, a big sum of that West Fraser money.
And I guess I just wanted to know what portion of it, you know, far as current. I'm not even talking about past due. If I looking at the budget and the budget, you know, you saying you paid everything in here, but everybody didn't use it. We had a little couple of money to left over there. There's no true numbers to me that I'm seeing as a citizen or whatever. And then I'm looking at, we're saying increased taxes. I'm kind of upset you can't handle what you got. How well I'm going to give you more money for if you're not a good steward over what we already given?
Well, I think the missing piece here, and I'm, I'm one to really, really, you know, make a big deal out of it simply because I truly understand now that we do have some, some bills out there that we need to pay. You know, and I think that's, we don't have a good number on that. Until, you know, our administrator say it usually takes three years to do it. I agree, it's probably going to take three years. Now, can we weather the storm and hopefully get some help from, you know, our congressional uh, partners and mainly, you know, Representative Clark and hopefully Representative Pelosi and Senator Patel. I think that's what it's going to take to, to bridge this, this gap until we, 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 we get a balanced budget. Because if you get two point seven that you didn't count on.
Right.
And now, once you get caught up, now you have a way. You got a clear sailing. That's where I live at.
And my question is again, how we know where we're going when we don't know what we owe? Nobody has came and told us this is how much we have in outstanding deal.
That's what we're trying to do, Val. We're trying to find.
I've been trying, y'all been trying for a whole year and we still don't know how much we owe.
We getting there.
Now it's got to be in a system somewhere.
We getting there.
It's not in Q S one?
I don't know. It's not in my system. I don't know.
From my understanding, it's in the boxes that we have over there.
In a box? Okay.
Boxes, not box, boxes.
In boxes. Well, I'm just saying, until, and you need to be real with the citizen because you're asking the citizen to pay more money, but you're not being real and say, well, we got this in outstanding debt that we need to flip. We should know how much outstanding debt we got.
We have boxes of bills that this intern will help us get through.
And when can we expect to know what the outstanding debt are?
Soon as, as council give the green light to go ahead and hire an intern.
So we can't get it until the intern get here?
Well.
Okay. I'm just asking because, I'm just asking because I'm looking at, and I don't, I don't, you know, like I said, you can come back at me thinking, but I'm coming as a citizen and not as the, or um, the treasurer. Because I'm saying, if you're doing a job, you don't pay bill, you don't pay bills every day. So what are you doing in the meantime if you don't pay, if you're not paying bills every day? Something, and if that's all your job is to do is to pay bills, then what are you doing in the meantime? Because I don't, you don't write a check every day. So what is doing in the meantime that you can't get one year? And then ready to go to the next year and get it done?
I think one of the things we've been told as a council, it's not necessarily the bill paying that part of it we're doing, but in order to pay the bills, you got to do the verification. You know, you got to look at the purchase order. You got to look at the invoice and make sure it matches. That everything matches. That, that is time consuming.
Well, again, on that, if you're doing an invoice, and we're not going to get technical on anything, but if you go back to the person who originated the invoice and ask them, is this correct? And let them sign off on it. And then you don't have to check too much because you have a signature stating that this is correct to pay. And, and I'm through, I don't want to get too technical.
Let me say, just to counter that, even if I'm ordering a pot, okay, that's a hundred ninety dollars, okay? Now, once we get the bill in from the vendor or the supplier, we got to make certain that invoice matches with what was sent, be paid. So it's a little time consuming.
Yeah, but I'm still, I'm, I'm still saying what I'm saying because, and I, and I just believe the citizen needs to know what is in outstanding debt. Y'all might don't want to know, but I want to know what's in outstanding debt so we can know when we going to ever get finished.
And I agree.
Because they keep saying that, that's going to be a cover up.
I agree. Thank you so much. But I do believe, I do believe without question, without reservation, we're on the right track and administrator and her staff are hard on the job. I really do.
I agree.
And Mr. Chair, one other question before we, I knew you'd probably hit that gal. Because I just want to ask on page five. The con, this, this helped me out with, I forgot what we did for the contract, your ma, contract, your service. Why do we have that, um, ten thousand?
I don't, I don't, I can't, I don't have a best.
Page five, I know you can't see. I'm sorry, page five, y'all.
Page five.
He's clear about that.
Chanel, you have an answer?
It's in I T.
I T?
Yeah. So are we giving more money or is this, this ten thousand?
I T?
Yes, this, this was a um.
Oh, I see.
No, this was, this was a request. This, the I T budget, I, I got that from Downey. This was a request for the, um, what we need.
Is that going to go to his towards his salary or what is this?
No, 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 no.
What's the request? Downey in there?
See.
I know, that's what I'm saying. I just want to make sure.
Okay, no, no, no. That's, that's equipment. That's not, so we have, um, we have licenses. So you have contract for service. We're talking about licenses. We're not talking about any change in his salary.
No, I gave this ten thousand. That's all I just want to know. Additional than.
Yeah, and so his was moved from, um, that was in, um.
Well, I understand his, I don't know, I understand his, if the question was just that only ten thousand dollars. I didn't know that he was going to get that or you going to hire somebody or we need some type of service or something, you know, these numbers.
Yes, yes. So the ten thousand.
I still know ten thousand dollars.
You got nine eleven?
Well, page, page five.
Yeah, we don't have ten thousand dollars.
See, we got too many papers going around, but anyway, that's.
Uh huh, that's true. I might miss something.
And then the other thing, did we put a solicitor in there? I forgot about that him too. Did we owe the solicitor?
Yeah.
The program.
No, the solicitor come in.
Yeah, I think he's in there.
Yeah, he's in there.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to.
He's in there. We did, we never given him what he wanted.
We owe, but we owe the back pay. That's what I'm asking.
Well, we probably, probably got that out with all the money.
All right. At this time, if nobody has anything else, we'll close our public hearing. And I'll call our special call meeting to order. At this time, I'll ask Mr. Jamie White to lead us in on application.
Dr. Spurrier, our father, we just thank you for allowing us to be here this day. We ask that you would just guide us in this meeting. We ask that you would just touch each and every one of us. We ask that you would just bless each and every citizen of Allendale County. Right now, we just ask for knowledge, wisdom and understanding as we conduct the business of our county. These blessings and all those. We ask you, your son Jesus Christ, in the name for the sake, amen.
Amen.
Next, declare we have a quorum. We'll move on to four for the approval of the agenda. Can you get a motion?
So move second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. It's time to welcome everybody out and can move on to number six. Can you motion to go into executive session?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
...
Call our meeting back to order. This time we have some recommendations from our personnel committee.
Okay, I want to be first. Personnel committee received a request for the county to continue to provide health coverage for county council members after the close of their term. The recommendation that the committee would be...
In council, make it right.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
No, that's right.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Pastor.
All right. The recommendation would be that if accepted, the ordinance would structure health coverage for county council members with 28 years of experience and meeting the retirement age.
Okay, so the recommendation would be if we were to agree to that, that we would go back to an ordinance providing such, right?
That's correct.
Okay, this time I entertain a motion to accept that recommendation. Do we have a motion to accept the recommendation of the ordinance for health insurance? Final time, do we have a motion to accept the recommendation for an ordinance providing health insurance for council members serving 28 years?
Mr. Chairman, I make the back motion.
Okay, got a motion to accept the recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second to accept the recommendation to enact a new ordinance providing health insurance coverage for county council members serving at least 28 years. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I oppose.
I oppose.
Neat.
And now you have it. All right, they have another recommendation. Mr.?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In meeting with administrator, we're recommending a gas allowance up to $400 per month and a salary increase of $6.
Okay, we've got a motion to allow $400 monthly for gas allowance for the administrator and a $6,000 increase in pay. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving on to old business. We've got a third and final reading of an ordinance enacting the Allendale County budget for physical year 2024-2025. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to establish operating and capital budgets for the county of Allendale, South Carolina, for the physical year commenced in July 1, 2024, to provide for the levy of taxes for Allendale County for the physical year commenced in July 1, 2024, providing for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, to provide for other county purposes, to provide for certain physical and other matters related to. Section 1, the appropriation general fund, $12,554,065, fire service, $1,028,805, E911, $607,7139, airport, $306,6743, water district, $506,8856, office of Asian, $515,150.
All right, we've got a motion to accept the physical, the 2024 budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And this time we'll need a motion to adjourn.
So...
Motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion.